Okay, six o'clock. All the members are here except, no, Ron is wrong with us?
Um, he is not. We did not have it published on the agenda.
Okay, so Ron is absent.
Correct.
The school board members are here. We have one student rep. So we're ready to begin.
Right.
Our affirmation meeting here. Communication items.
All right, so I will start off our communication items inviting our elementary school principal to let us know what's happening at the elementary.
Good evening. Thanks for having me again tonight. Uh, just kind of a overview of what's happening at the elementary level. March is food drive month, so our benches in our hallway are getting filled up with all kinds of food. Um, each week we focus on a different um food item or category and really partnering with the Payne'sville Community Center um and getting those shelves restocked. Wednesday, we do accept cash donations and students are able to dress up accordingly. I think this week is Jersey Day, um, so supporting our teams with some snacks and things like that. Um, so that's off to a good start. Spring conferences, we had that March 2nd, and I just want to say a special thank you to our families um who attended conferences or made that extra phone call to their child's um teacher. We had over ninety-five percent of our families connected to their teacher, um whether that was in-person conferences on March 2nd or a different date that worked better for the family, or like I said, through a phone conference. Sometimes that was um the alternative route if they weren't able to get in person. National School Breakfast Week was last week. Some of you came and served breakfast to our our students in the morning, so thank you for your participation in that. You always get a, what are you doing here, serving breakfast or serving food? But, uh, yes, um, but just a fun way for you and for us to um see our students go through the line each morning and serve them breakfast. We had on March 9th, it was a snowy evening last week, kindergarten open house and registration. We welcomed over fifty families uh to that event, um, given the snowy evening. Um, welcoming the class of two thousand thirty-six as kindergartners next fall. Um, so that was great to see families to answer questions that they had. They attended um a presentation given by myself and our kindergarten teachers. They did uh classroom tours and then turned in registration forms. I'm really trying to push the March fifteenth um soft deadline, if you will, uh, just to give us an idea as the numbers um as we plan and coordinate sections for next year. So that way we are um making those decisions with informed information in a timely manner. So we sent out seventy-nine registration packets to families, and that was based on our community ed numbers enrollment. That was based on our census. And then I also sent out an inquiry survey um a while ago, just asking families if you remember me talking about that, what's your plan for fall? And um, so we sent out seventy-nine registration packets. Up to today, we have fifty returned that are committed to being part of the class of twenty thirty-six. Um, that's the kindergarten open house update. We have DARE graduation. As you know, our fifth grade students participate in the DARE program, and they just all read their DARE essays, so we've got the graduation coming up on March twenty-fourth. Our fifth grade families are welcome to attend. I do want to recognize some students. We had um some more students read their um or received their one million word certificate, and I would just like to formally recognize Lydia Keel, Molly Strong, and Tucker Gurkin. Also, we had a student reach their two-millionth word over the weekend, and that was pretty exciting. Um, Emery Golez met her two-millionth word. Well, she is um passionate for reading, so that's very exciting. Looking ahead, uh, this month, we are celebrating Music in Our Schools Month. Um, we're looking at our kindergarten registration and watching those as they keep trickling in. And um, you know, as we look ahead to twenty-three, twenty-four, having those conversations with grade levels um about the master schedule and how we can provide our services and support. Questions? All right. One of these days I'll get a question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and then we'll move down to our secondary school principal, and we'll invite David up and see what's going on at the secondary.
All right, good evening. Apologize for the rough voice here. Um, so we also have our March food drive that kicked off today, and we we are doing a um ten days of winning food drive. And so there'll be competitions between advisories, and then um students have a chance to win a lot of different prizes for bringing items in and cash donations. Those, there's uh coupons from McDonald's, Dairy Queen, um drink coupons from Champs Cafe, Casey's Pizza, and and some other things. So that started today. Uh, our PBIS team uh finished up two more days of training in Sartell on February twenty-eighth and March first, and we, I will, we'll get you an update on where we are in that process. Uh, hopefully sometime before the end of the school year, while uh some people from our team come in and talk about that a little bit. Uh, winter camp, our, this, winter weather seems to put a damper on everything, and so uh sixth graders were able to go to their annual winter camp. Last week, it was, it was rescheduled from a few weeks previous, and they go up to the Long Lake Conservation Center, and uh all reports are good, so. Um, the display cases by the fitness center, I just want to give you a little update on those. Um, it's right, right across from the fitness center, by the theater. Um, we're looking, we're working on revamping those, and I'm uh working with uh Mr. Kapsner to, we're gonna put wood in there and kind of update the shelving and the backgrounds and things like that. And then we're going to uh have, one of the cases will be visual arts, and um the other one is going to be uh finance. And so a little bit of both in there, and then they'll be able to um rotate things in and out. You'll notice that we did, we did add some speech things in there recently, and so we're gonna just revamp everything in there and and have a visual and a performing arts area, so. Um, upcoming events, we have, uh, March twenty-second, we have our blood drive uh that's organized by NHS. We had one in December, or weather, we had a lot of appointments that didn't um get filled, so they they opted to try it again. Um, on March twenty-seventh, we have a speaker, his name is Terrence Tally, and he's a a national speaker, and he's gonna come in and do two programs, uh, one for a middle school, one for high school, and he's just um a storyteller who is uh gonna be just talking about uh life and and from kind of a funny point of view. And that is brought to us through um Student Reach Minnesota, and they, he will be in the area for three days at at different schools in the area, and and sponsored by them, and so it's no cost to us. We had a speaker come a few years ago like that also. Um, and tonight we have choir concerts, and on March twentieth, we have a band concert. Any questions for me?
All right, let's hear about our activities. What's going on activity-wise?
Good evening, everyone. So we're currently in a transition phase to going from our winter activities to our spring activities, because I believe, because you look outside and it seems to get snow every other day. Uh, these activities include speech, softball, baseball, boys and girls golf, boys and girls track and field, trap, and tonight, like David said, we have a choir concert for nine through fifteen, and next Monday is a band concert for nine through twelve, so. Plenty of things going on, to say the least, and once again, we're thankful for the pack for, you know, we're gonna be stuck indoors for quite a while with our practices, and we're just appreciative of all the space that we are fortunate enough to have. This past winter, we had strong seasons across the board. A lot of improvement was shown with our programs. We had three wrestlers make it to state with Roman Rollberg, Peyton Hemisch, and uh Spencer Eisenbrow. So congratulations to those wrestlers and their coaches. And just to reiterate what I said last meeting, is just really appreciate all the support from our families and our community throughout the season. Um, me when I get to either coach or when I'm standing at the quarter supervisor or just being there as a spectator, I just, I just love looking across to our features and just seeing them, you know, mostly full, and all the kids running around and enjoying themselves, and it's just a great atmosphere to be, so I just really appreciate all the help that we get and support that we get. Um, as I mentioned before, um, with our new spring season starting up, we encourage our community members and families to check out our online calendars for schedules, rosters, live stream links, if anything is available. Uh, it's a little bit tougher because things are outdoors, but sometimes uh schools are able to offer those, and any start times or locations with, like I said, the the weather, it's gonna be a wet spring, we kind of foresee. So a lot of changes might occur and sites might change. Maybe we end up flipping home and away. So a lot of things might change within a short amount of time, so constantly checking our schedules online. Um, and we encourage anyone who is new to an activity this spring to get their fees done online through campus or their eligibility forms turned into me or to the office, and get that done, taking care of it as quickly as we can, and also their sports, physicals, if they haven't had one in the past three years. And uh, I guess one last little thing here, if anybody wants to grab a shovel and start shoveling off the track in our baseball and softball fields, um, that would be great, and get the, get the grass showing pretty soon, that'd be nice. Otherwise, we look forward to getting outside. Now, it's gonna be tough being indoors for a few weeks, but we'll make the best of it and constantly try to improve, and I don't know, what weather is gonna be in the future, so.
When is the first baseball, softball, like, outdoor scheduled event?
I believe it's April sixth.
Yeah. And that was really April, right?
Yeah, April sixth.
We have P M balls for them to play.
We might look at moving through those games, but thankfully we have lights. We can always play some double headers if we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, try to make the best of it that we can. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll invite up Chris O'Brien, Chris O'Brien, our community education director, and what's happening over in community ed.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. All right, so we just got some information on the um the PAC, so I'll start with that. Uh, membership seem to be holding steady. We have had a, an uptick of um seniors coming in, and we're getting them registered for Silver Sneakers and some of the other insurance programs. So I think they're coming home, or they probably are a little sad about the weather, but they're starting to come back from being in the south. So we're starting to see an uptick with the seniors. We're busy with birthday parties and events. We just had a J O volleyball tournament last weekend. Um, there's a youth basketball tournament this Saturday. Um, next, uh, March twenty-fifth, Center Care has booked the space for a employee appreciation, a family and uh event. And then April first and second, Pace Siders is coming to um uh have a tournament as well. So we're, we're busy with tournaments, and like I said, birthday parties are filling in on those Sundays. We hired some staff, which I've been utilizing them to help uh the extra staff to help cover all the events that I just talked about. Um, and what I've been noticing for weekends, when we don't have tournaments, is the place is busy. And um, I'm experimenting with extending some staff hours to uh just see how that, see if we can accommodate some of those needs, you know, what the current welcome center hours on Sunday, for example, is two to six P M, and I had to work a couple Sundays, so right at two o'clock, about fifty people come in and they want everything set up at the same time. So, so um I'm extending some of the hours so that we can see if we can accommodate that growth and and promote more use um during that time. For community ed, the spring brochure came out on March first, so we're taking registrations for many of our youth and adult programs that are happening in uh April, May, and even June and July. Um, uh, our summer catalog will go out in mid-April to feature the rest of our summer programs. We, the big thing that we're doing right now is we're training for our new registration program called Elio, and it's very, it's a lot, so um, so while we're trying to focus on that, we're still trying to take all the registrations and keep the day-to-day um business going. Um, the goal is to launch it for our preschool wraparound care, summer pause program, and the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four before and after school care plus. So we're just gonna focus on the more of those childcare-type programs with this launch, and then hopefully we will use it for um the fall programs for everything else. So I've been busy trying to streamline some things. Uh, we are working on, so I'll just do a pause report, we're working on like uh handbooks, reviewing policies. Uh, Kerry's been working on looking at those so that we can post them on a webpage for people to look at and not have three different handbooks. We're trying to streamline it to one. Um, uh, we're also working with the school age care and on getting their summer themes ready. They're doing um careers, so we're getting those field trips ready and getting some of the themes that they'll be doing that each week. Uh, live stream, finished up the winter season. We're gonna be having a meeting this Friday to talk about, to wrap up the winter season, talk about spring, and then we'll be inventorying all the pro, all of our uh equipment, giving that in one place. Um, preschool, again, we're looking at the handbooks, webpages, information packets, and enrollment forms that are being used so that we can uh match what's going on with the school district and to create files that are are similar to what the uh school district wants for information. So when we pass those files on to kindergarten, maybe there would be a little less paperwork for some of the families to fill out. So we're, we're trying to work to to make those all match. And then finally, uh playground, um Lisa Stang, one of our pre-K teachers, she has put together a parent group that is interested in promotion, uh fundraising, and coordinating some of the assets of this project. So we'll begin meeting with that group to just start to get a plan to get that information out to the community. That's what I have. Any questions?
Just one question about it.
Yeah.
With the busyness on weekends, is there something on the website or someplace that people go to to know that maybe this is not the weekend that I'm gonna go up and?
So there is a calendar.
Or whatever. I know I've seen signs on the doors.
Yes, I I put signs on the doors, but there is a calendar on the, uh, when you go to the school webpage and click on community ed, though it opened, that homepage opens, and there's a calendar you can click on, and you can see what's happening at the PAC.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know if people always um know what that, you know, um, understand what's going on.
Well, if you're up there on a regular basis, you'll see notices and stuff. I'm just concerned that we have a lot of people come and walk at some, you know, last weekend they couldn't, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So that word out, we don't have people driving in and then getting.
We try to tell our walkers, because a number of them are not members, because they, you can walk for free, so they would not get a notice if we were to email.
Okay.
Um, so we just keep trying to tell them, if you follow Facebook, follow us on that, and we'll put it on Facebook, and, you know. So we did have a few people that, you know, had to turn around or or watch while everything was getting set up, so. That is something we're working on.
Yep.
I've spoken to quite a few um seniors who use the PAC, and they're deeply appreciative of the PAC parking and the sixty-five-plus parking, because they can get in safely, not have to traverse the parking lot and possible ice and snow.
Right.
They're very happy that you did that.
Oh, I didn't, but yeah. It wasn't me, but uh, it is nice, yeah.
Spreading that there is a possibility of getting in safely.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. All right, anything else?
Thank you. Thank you. All right, um, I'm going to officially put my hard hat, and I'm going to transfer it. Um, Ken Ozenorf, come on up. Um, so welcome, Ken, to our team. Um, so Ken came in today and he said, all right, how much do I, how much do I do? And I said, boy, there's a lot. No, anyways.
How much information you guys want?
Um, Ken, welcome aboard. We're happy to have you, so go ahead and give us your update.
So I think I've been here three, four weeks now, and there've been, the entire staff has been nothing but helpful, and then Janelle for sure, Sam, Cass, I mean, it was been, it's been awesome. It's been really a pleasure to start here. I'm really happy, having good experience, and I mean, I'm happy to be here. It's fun, so. Um, did get to go around, uh, you know, I tried to make my way around, and obviously I'm stationed in this school. I do try to make it to the elementary daily if possible. I do miss a few days when it gets hectic over here. I got a few projects ready started. Um, but I went with Cassie over there, and we walked out, and uh, you know, I don't like to call them wish lists, probably uh uh, the better our future at schools list that probably take higher dollars. And I can see them. It's pretty easy to see the spots over there. There's some projects that need some attention and uh so on and so forth, and uh some things that we can do short-term that don't cost a whole lot and really give the place a nice um facelift, so on and so forth. Uh, so looking into all that stuff, I do have the projects going with the sewer line outside here. I'd have to be get started here right nearly in the spring, too, the snow has gone and so on and so forth. And with that, I find out that there's actually two manholes, and they're only, they're going in one, and we get the job completed the other one, and he said it's plump full of ruts. So, fuck, so he was looking for a shovel. I'm looking for anybody with a good hand on an axe.
Then I have a map, too, right?
All right. That, we do have the football field light projects, and uh, you know, learn a lot there on the phone lock, getting people's inputs and so on and so forth. Um, and then, you know, is there anything you guys want me to bring to these meetings that you really want to know about? Just let me know, and uh, and, you know, you can always get ahold of me, email me. I'm sure my email's out on the district website soon here and stuff, so.
But he is Ken Ozenorf, not Kay Ozenorf.
Yeah.
There's a difference.
Somebody else took my handle.
Yeah.
And uh, so I'm, I'm Rick there. He was hoping for some green grass. You're gonna actually see that pretty soon here, because uh we are gonna help scoogs in the softball fields out, and uh Nelson, we're gonna blow a little bit off, especially on the fence lines, because it never ever melts there. So we'll see some grass, and when you see some grass, it opens up pretty quick. So we'll be doing that shortly, and hopefully the ground is hard enough to do it yet.
Yeah.
I've done that in the past when I hadn't worked here, and uh, talk to A N C already, so that's all gonna happen, so. Any other questions? Thank you, guys. Thank you for all you guys do, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. All right.
Hey, ready to move on to budget?
All right, so um for the budget, um, today I'm just going to share with you um uh the spreadsheet or the the presentation that I started showing us kind of over the course of the last couple of meetings, and and I am going to come back to this consistently to reference so we can kind of keep, keep track of where we are in the process. So um, as you'll see, uh, we, at our February work session, we started the the budget discussion, just previewing um some numbers and took a look at fund balance. Um, at the February business meeting, um, the board set a target recommendation of reductions, and we also did a, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three um first revision of the budget. And so today, uh, what I'm gonna do is, um, again, I want to come back and take a look at, with the um budget reduction that we, uh, that the board set, I wanted to walk you through what that looks like. Let me share this one, and these are linked in two different places, so if you're looking on the agenda, it is linked um as underneath the resources or is um also hyperlinked right in the presentation, so you could find it a couple of different places. So you'll see, um, and what is different are the changes are bolded, okay? So you'll see um in here, um, I did apply the two-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction, um, and you'll see what that does to, to our fund balance, and that would, or to, to the budget. It makes it a positive budget versus a deficit budget. And um in doing that, I I also want to come down to the bottom and share a couple of different observations with you, um, because there are some things that we, we have talked about for um about the reductions. So the one I want to add in is um, we also are able to, and this is calculated in the reduction as well, we are able to eliminate our college macroeconomics class. Um, that's not eliminated due to a lack of interest. That's eliminated due to a lack of licensure in the sense that the universities require, they're, in order to give that college credit, we had to have instructors that had held a specific license with the specific amount of credits, and there was a window the, uh, that staff were grandfathered in. Last year was technically the window, end of the window, and they extended it one more year. So this year was our last year to be able to offer college macroeconomics um for college credit. So uh, the, the teacher who teaches that is actually retired and has come back to teach that, and and because they are not going to grandfather us in any longer, she's not going to maintain that course. So um, we are able to reduce that as well. So the one piece that I do want to spend just a few minutes taking a look at, because there were some questions last meeting about the the foreign language, um, so I do want to share that spreadsheet with you, so you can either click on the link to see the spreadsheet, or it is hyperlinked under as the resources again. Um, and I will um make that a little bit bigger, um, because there's actually, okay, so, so this, this document really is um, what it is, is it's a running history of enrollment of the courses, okay? And so we start back up in um fifteen, sixteen, and you'll see we have Spanish one, two, three, and four, and then you can come across and look at German one, two, three, and four, and then you'll see the middle school sections, okay? So what I did is, there's a couple of things that I I wanted to point out to you. You'll see that some of these courses have been offered concurrently, so we could try to maintain Spanish three and four and German three and four, so they would be held within the same class, and the teacher would differentiate to issue both three and four, okay? Um, as you'd kind of take a look at, so these are the other numbers. I tend to function a little bit better when I can see things in a visual, so I wanted to put that out for you in a visual as well, and just come down to um this chart. So this is, um, you'll see the visual representation of the different classes that we have, that have the numbers. And then um off to the side, if I can get my mouse to move over, I'm gonna have to go up just a little bit more. Or am I frozen? There we go. So off to the side, on the right-hand side there, you'll see uh Spanish one, two, three, and four are those um first four colors, and then um German one, two, three, and four are the last four colors. So these are the the high school offerings and the interest, okay? Now, one of the things that I know we've, we've had a question about and and just some, how are you trying to feed those classes? What are the things that you're doing to really build um that, I guess, those foreign languages? So then I want you to kind of come up and take a look at this little green box. The green box on the right is where we really, those were all the middle school classes, okay? That's, those are the classes that were required, um, and that's when we uh had seventh or eighth graders that had to take them, and the intent there was to expose them so that they would, in hopes, carry that foreign language on. Um, but when you take a look at that, you'll see, and you'll see, we have middle school um seventh grade or Spanish seven, middle school German eight. Um, you'll see that we've offered those with quite a few students in them, so again, they were required. Um, unfortunately, we haven't seen that um transfer into continued enrollment over the course of time. So this is just a little bit of the background data as to why the, why that recommendation was coming forward. Um, and so I wanted to to take a minute and present that to you and see if there are any questions about that information. So if there aren't any questions about that portion, I'm gonna come back to um the spreadsheet and bring up our enrollment. Um, so you'll see that our enrollment, um, again, is gonna continue um as we look at our year-to-date enrollment. You'll see we have one column with no reds and greens. So there was no movement from February fifteenth to March first. It's a short week, remember? You got only twenty-eight days, but. So um, just as, you know, I, I think it's helpful to keep an eye on this, just so we see the movement. Ultimately, here's really what I come down to and I take a look at. Is I track these numbers on the bottom, cause that's kind of our, our, our kid count, right? So if I'm gonna look at this, when we started the school year, we started at eight ninety-two on uh, September. On the fifteenth of September. Um, and this is again, these are just pure, pure kids. This is not the calculation of count for funding. So this is just pure kids, okay? Um, and these are K twelve, not including preschool. And then you'll see, we've had some ups and some downs, and we're back at eight ninety-four. Okay, so that's what we're kind of watching and keeping an eye on. So again, it's, it's relatively stable. It fluctuates. And again, the purpose here is to kind of show the ins and the outs and the ups and the downs. But um. We are really trying to keep an eye on, on any big influxes or movements. Um, you know, one of the things that we, and I'll just um, come back to my, the, the sheet of other considerations here. Sorry, in the. I'm gonna come back to the budget presentation, cause I wanted to come down to the bottom to some other considerations that I wanted to talk through. Let me present this.
Maybe there wasn't any movement in February and March because we were all snowed in.
Well, be. Um, so when you come down and take a look at some of the other considerations that we've been talking about, there are some things that we, we have to continue to keep our eyes on. Um, you know, we heard today that there were fifty students that um, came through and completed the kindergarten registration, but seventy-nine packets went out. Well, that's a big flux. That's a big variation. So uh, I really appreciate having a, a timeline of March fifteenth to try, try to help us make decisions. Um, but we, that's a big, that's a big discussion, because if we have eighty kids versus fifty. Seventy-nine kids versus fifty, that's a big change in sections for the kindergarten classrooms. Um, you'll also maybe know that. And um, our kindergarten, our current kindergarten classes ended up being larger than we um, anticipated. When we ran registration in the spring. So we're gonna have some, um, you know, the question is those first graders are gonna move up. Those kindergartners are in, move up to first grade. So we're keeping an eye on that and we're watching that to know what makes the most sense. And so that remains on the radar. And when I come up and I look at. So that's great if we're, if we're no longer in a deficit budget, we, we are very likely gonna be considering adding another teacher. Where that goes and what that looks like, I'm not sure. Um, but I think that's something that we really need to keep on the radar and that would impact that, that um, that budget as well. Um, we also are taking a look at, um, I, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about curriculum. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion as our staff have um, proceeded through the letters training. Our uh, English Language Arts teachers. Have expressed again concern about uh, the English Language Arts curriculum. Um, and not just about the fact that it's curriculum, but about the process and understanding, do we have all the right tools? And I think that's something that we need to continue to look at. Um, and beyond the, um, the uh, English Language Arts um. Curriculum, we also have new uh, science standards coming. We're gonna have social standards coming. So we're gonna have some work. That we need to do around curriculum. And um, and I think that we're gonna really need to look at, at having some monetary allocation in order to do that. Um, do I think it's gonna need to be a hundred thousand dollars to buy about a full-on curriculum? No, I don't think it's gonna be that. But I do think it's gonna cost the district some money and some resources because we've. Um, we've been focusing our time on more of a, of a digital curriculum writing. And pulling in some, um, some virtual resources. Um, but we're still in, in that work, we're finding some gaps. And, and I think that that's important for us to take a look. Okay? You'll also see as I look at the expenditures that are expected, um, you know, you heard uh, Ken talk about our football lights. You heard him talk about um, the um, the sewer line that goes underneath the, um, underneath the football field. Um, or the north, north of the football field. Now that's been built into our long-term facilities maintenance money, the, the football. Pipe sewage pipe portion has water pipe, the pipe portion, the project. Y'all know what I'm saying. I'm just not saying it very eloquently, but um, because I get stuck on sewage and then I, uh, not sewage, but it's, it's not, but um. That's built into the long-term facility maintenance plan, but our, our football stadium lights, we're not. You know, and that was a cost that we're, we're looking at and we know that that's, that's important. I also can tell you as I'm looking at our long-term facility maintenance plan. That we, we have things that are in there such as looking at our track. We're taking a look at, you know, there's, there's some pretty big, um, big gaps off the side of our track where we need, it needs some work. Our football field has some models that have developed over the course of time. We need to take a look at that. Our softball fields, they need to be evaluated and we have to, to take a look at, what are we gonna do with those? Those were all part of the long-term facility maintenance. Plan, um, that I walked, walked into. When our committee get, the facilities committee gets together on the twenty-third of March, we're gonna take a look at, at that. And look at how do we revamp that and how do we really um. Strategically take a look at the things that should be packaged together. And if there are things that really make sense to um, reevaluate. Um, I think when we look at knowing that we are spending. A portion of our long-term facility maintenance money um, to pay for the indoor air quality project. That, you know, we, we knew when that. Decision was made that it was going to pull money out of our long-term facility maintenance money. But I think we have to be mindful of all the projects that need to be done and maintained so we can continue to move forward. This is a physically conservative budget approach. Um, but I, I'm gonna tell you, I, I sure would prefer to be conservative than come up ultimately short year over year. So with that, I'll just stop for if there's any questions or see if there's anything that um. Any comments from the board?
Do we have the chart anymore? Or have we prepared a chart on the roofs?
Um, they're.
One of our largest expenses at the roof.
Yep.
What year does we anticipate changing? What? We got that in place?
Yep, we sure do. Yep, that's part of our plan.
Cause that's a big deal.
It is a big.
That's where the money is.
Yep, it's a big deal. And um, on, on, and uh, we'll take, the facilities committee will take a look, have it in a little bit more detail, but. Um, I wanna say in twenty-twenty-six is when, so next year, we're gonna have to be giving out for bids at this time. Um, so that we can implement it, or maybe it's twenty-five. But yes, we have.
Is that based on the schedule or is that based on a degrading roof? Where what's happened to us for years is many times we were getting an extra three, four years out of a lot of this stuff, because there was nothing wrong with the roof.
Yes.
Cause it was on schedule. We didn't replace it.
Yep.
If it wasn't necessary.
Yeah. I'll, um, Bruce, off the, off the top of my head, I don't remember. So I'll have to look.
I guess.
Yeah.
Show up at a meeting like that, if you have all that, it gives you a better idea.
Absolutely.
Well, how we have to deal with everything.
Yep, absolutely. And, and that is for sure, one of the things that um, we have prepared and ready to take a look at. Yeah.
One of the unknowns, of course, is the enrollment for next year, but retirements. Is there a deadline when? Do we know now what the retirements are for next year or can there still be some surprises?
Um, so certified staff, the um, the deadline is March first. Um, but our other staff, we don't have a deadline. Yep.
And we only had the one retirement, you know?
Um, we've had, I, I've had a couple of other conversations, um, but we have um, one for sure that has come through. Yeah. And I do, I, I, I will say that I've had another person um, explore the opportunity and has given me kind of a preliminary. Uh, but it's not a, we haven't moved forward as a, so there would have been the timeline. Not the timeline, but not a hundred percent about the process. So um, I'm, I'm respectfully, you know. I've been asked to hold and I'm respecting that decision, knowing it could impact and influence for us, so. Okay, but I also wanna be respectful. Um, if there aren't any other questions on, on that document, I'll just uh, real quickly remind the board kind of what the next steps are. Um, in, in the process and in, in the timeline, the estimated timeline. So at the March business meeting, um, there would be another budget presentation. At that point in time, there would be unrequested leave of absence for continuing contract teachers, because there is a statutory timeline that we have to meet. Um, and so that would start the process at the end of March. The um, and then we would have the first, um. We would have our second budget presentation for the board in um, the twenty-two, twenty-three. Actually, that would be the third one, cause it would be our final revision. Um, the budget approval have to take place at the board level from June thirtieth and June thirtieth. So you're, you're going to see. This come to you over the course of the next few months, but the, the things that have very distinct timelines are the um. Are the twenty, i- in the March work session and then the March business meeting.
The part I never understood is the state can't figure out their stuff to figure out how much money they're giving us in a timely fashion. So our superintendent has to keep a whole bunch of things in her back pocket. Because we have no idea how much money's coming in and we're in the, on a year like this, you're in the middle of negotiations.
Yeah.
How do you make that work? And the way I understood that when the government was set up the way it is at the present. This is gonna be a, the cat's ticket as far as us getting our money like we're supposed to. That's right back to the same thing. I don't think it makes any difference what party it is or whatever. They're gonna fight that to the last minute.
Yeah, I do expect that it's going to be a um, a lengthy session. Um, and I don't expect that we're gonna have a lot of definitive answers on. Um, the per people formula um, until the later in. That probably down to the wire of May if they get it done.
Well, and I've, it's like the past year, there was years that I recall that they saved it for the announcement from State Fair. Too much, I only had to have our budget in place. So from, for some reason, this is a really tough thing for superintendents, because. We're taking an entire hand behind our back and then we're telling her, you need to figure out this budget for the next year and. Most of it, the big numbers, we don't have any idea what they are.
And, and so.
It's disgusting.
When we do that, I think we try to, again, budget conservatively, um, because it's um. I, I think it's, it's difficult to make assumptions when there are so many moving parts. Any other questions on the budget development overview? So then I'll move on to profile of a graduate, if that's alright.
Yes.
Okay. So I did put our profile of the graduate information that was on, and you'll see that I have the resources from two fourteen to, of twenty-three. So those are just the schools. That have gone through this process. And I wanted to share with you um, what this process will look like. So again, this is, this has been on our strategic plan and really, um, as I'm. Hearing more about this and seeing more about this, I really do see that this is gonna be a nice opportunity for us to market. And tell our story of who we are and what we do. So when you walk through the, the, the design process. Um, and we have the opportunity to, to do this process in conjunction and collaboration with two other school districts. Um, which I think is really a nice opportunity, um, so that we can, um, we can see and do, hear what other people are doing, but it also is. Um, I, I think you, when you're doing. You're sharing ideas, you generate some additional, um, in my opinion. You, you think of things that maybe you wouldn't have if you just did it on our own. So um, I'm gonna make this, I'm gonna share it and then make it a little bit bigger.
Oh, part that I missed. Is there a cost associated with this?
Uh, yeah, this would be part of, there would be a shared cost to developing this process. Yeah. And that's one of the reasons that it makes more sense in my mind to do it in conjunction with other people versus doing it on our own. Yeah.
What kind of cost are we talking?
Um, so for our districts to have it facilitated could be between um, seven and nine thousand. Or it would be our, we have our launch meeting where they come and it's again, so you'll, and pull in all of these different community members. Um, they facilitate the three different steps of the process. They develop, they take all of our information. Put it into our roadmap, whether we, however we decide it, it would look. And then they help us um, with the skills. And the definition of what those look like. So if we're going to say, let's say we identify. Problem solving as one of the key things that we want our students to have when they leave the Paines Valerius Schools. They also help us facilitate, what does that look like and sound like at a kindergarten level, at a sixth grade level, at a twelfth grade level? So it takes all of the information and of the skills and helps us break it out to make it usable, tangible, and consumable. So a- again, those are some of the things that are part of those plans that are, are linked on the website. You'll see all of that. Spelled out. Um, many of those districts did them on their own. Um, they brought them in and, and paid for them to come in and. I didn't really see that as a viable option for us. And so having, I guess we, we could talk about doing it that way. I just didn't. Feel there'd be a lot of support to do it that way.
So then they help facilitate the curriculum that will reach these goals?
So they, this is not about curriculum. This is about skills. This is about like, the things that we want our people to know. So they, they give us the structure to facilitate. So we, we would have an internal team that would be leading all of this work. In tandem. So they give us kind of, here are the things that you need to work through with your community members. Um, and, um, and then we bring it all back. And then they put it together for us. Into the usable, tangible. Here are some of the things that we've learned in working with all of this, all of these other um, districts. That when this is the skill, this is the pillar, the. Val, the um, uh. Value, that's not the word I'm thinking of. Um, yeah, we talked about establishing core values. So this is the core value your school district has. Here are all the subsets that we've seen from this district, this district, this program here. That have aligned with. Okay? Um, so in, in looking at this, again, this was part of the work that was in the strategic plan. Um, if the board has made a different determination that they aren't in alignment with that, I guess I would need to know that. But this was a, a very cost-efficient way. For me to look at moving forward and developing the profile of a graduate.
So it's seven, eighty thousand to, to have this. You've come in, play this out. So then what's the maintenance costs to approve that?
No, it's our own internal. So we can market. It would be, I guess it would be our, however we wanna publish it and however we wanna continue to market it. We get all the digital files. We get all the. Um, everything so that if we wanna use that as, as part of our marketing tool and our brand of who we are, we have all that. So again, one of the things that we've talked a lot about is how to engage our community and how to do that strategically. Um, and this is, so when you take a look at this, you're going to see all the individuals who would be part of this process. So we would be engaging students, our teachers, our families. Obviously, school staff would be involved. Um, school board members would be part of that. Um, we could, we would invite, now they may not participate, but policymakers, so any local um. Individuals who are part of policy development. Um, we would, could invite our county agencies. We could invite um, people within our communities such as. The Rose Center or um, individuals that really, who are the people, the stakeholders in our community that are influenced and impacted by the school? To understand what do you see as the key components of our, of our kids? After and in addition to, they know their, they know their content. They know their craft. They know the. If they are coming out of our, our CTE program and they're, they're graduating with um. Uh, with credits from the St. Cloud Technical College in our automotive program, wonderful. And can they problem solve? And do they demonstrate good character? And what does that look like? And how does that look for a kindergartner? And a ninth grader and a, um, and a senior. But all of these people in our community, I think engaging our, um. We've got, we've done a lot of work with our industrial park. That they've engaged for career and technical education programming. I would love to hear, what are the skills? What are the things that they see our graduates needing? In addition to their technical skills. We also know that they're going to be able to teach them a lot of the, the technical skills for. For welding. For welding or drafting for whatever. But some of those things, i- if we give them the foundation all the way through of perseverance or. And again, those are the things that we have to decide, what are the, what are the components that really matter? That make us up as a community. And that's where it's important to include some of these um, the discussion with these stakeholders. So part of what I wanted to do today was to have further conversation with the board around who are the people? That we would want to engage and who are the um, who are our stakeholders in our community? Um, that that really support and value the work that happens at the school. So that's one of the discussion points that I wanted to have from all of you.
If I look at the strategic plan, it it are probably gonna be a real similar group that we pulled together for the strategic plan as we worked on that. Um, about the same people. I'm just having trouble digging into this thing with an eight to ten thousand dollar cost and we're cutting budget on the other side. I I'm not sure the timing is right here.
What if, what if we took the money out of it? Would you think it's a good idea?
I I don't know how you can't take the money out of it, right?
You get somebody else to pay for it.
My, as I read some of those things, they talked about mastery of different things, right? Mastery of different things means you're gonna have to figure out how you're gonna decide if they mastered those things. Sometimes the people in technical ed that do really great out there, huge problem solving skills skills in their areas. May not need that, the mastery of English.
That's not the same, they're not the same skills though. That's it's if if. I can have a student that is a in an AP English class, an advanced placement or a college prep English class. That problem solving is gonna look different for that student than it is for a student that's in the welding class. But they both are gonna show problem solving through their coursework. And that's not the mastery of problem solving for a. It's not, it's not, I I have to demonstrate problem solving in a welding class when I'm my primary focus is. Is. College English. But problem solving looks different in each of those, but we can value problem solving as a whole. Vital skill. Whether I'm college prep English.
So how is it going to pick up the the skills of those students when they graduate with or without this? Are we gonna head right in that this is gonna drive everything? I mean, where where is that? I I'm just not seeing it. I, can I tell you honestly what I think?
Sure.
We're gonna get this all done and it will be on a shelf in about two years and we'll be back redoing a a strategic plan. And this will all be obsolete.
I disagree. And the reason I disagree is because I think this, this is driven from your strategic plan. And then your your next strategic plan continues to drive through this work. What is it that we value? So we, I hear a lot of people talk in this community about the career and technical education program. But I also hear a lot of people talk about, we have to have our students prepared for college, okay? Those are two very different, okay, traps, let's say. But there are very, there are skills that both of those sets of students need to have. Regardless of whether they're going into a four-year program or they're going to a trade program. Or they're gonna go directly into the workforce. It's not, it's in. And it's those skills that that are common amongst all of our students that we're talking about here. It's the things that are bringing, we've also talked about how do we bring people in to engage with our school? And this is, what is it that you want our, what does our community want our our students to have, see and demonstrate and know? And if I'm gonna hire a Paines Valeria Schools graduate, I'm gonna know they're gonna come out with. These things in addition to my ability to. Fix an engine, in addition to my ability to. Write a beautiful research paper, whatever the case might be. I don't see these, well, I I, okay, I will tell you. If the board feels that it's a waste of time and it's gonna sit on a shelf, it would sit on a shelf. But I would say your strategic plan is the same way. Many school districts, their strategic plans don't get touched.
Come on, are we on our third one?
I think so.
Or could we run the fourth one already? I think it's the third one.
The third strategic plan keeps growing and changing.
Yeah, so that's in ten years.
And that's the way it should be. They they evolve and they change, but they are set your direction. They're done in tandem, they're not isolated.
Here you're talking about a student and we're talking about K through twelve.
Yeah.
Um, this can't be a ten year deal. It has to be for their career, although you can't shift gears in ninth grade and decide you're gonna do something else after you have this. Perfect student, ninth grade, meeting all these expectations and then you change the rules. Well, do they then meet those expectations anymore?
Say more about change the rules, I'm not sure I'm following.
We're on our third strategic plan. Similar in content, maybe not as specific as this was for a student. You're talking about starting a process with kids that are in kindergarten and continuing that process to twelfth grade. Because you're working on all of their mastery, getting all these skills and all that ready. By the time they're in twelfth grade, well. If we put it all down on paper, is that how it's gonna work out? And at the end of the day, what is the difference from that student that's been working with this for twelve years? And our ability to follow this kind of a a method to today. Now, students have graduated here, we have them going in all different directions. We've opened up opportunity for them to understand a whole bunch of different things. Um, as far as careers and all the rest of that stuff. And so where is that compared to this? If we're looking for just marketing, well, a place like Kimball puts together an advertiser and they send it out to other districts. We just never want to do that kind of stuff.
Well, I would disagree. I mean, they they do, but they include information like this, like this is who we are and what we do. So one of the things I'll I'll make, I'll I'll compare it to is kind of like, let's talk about like. English language arts standards, okay? There are a plethora of skills. Um, activities that that are, there are, there are a, there is a lot to do. There's a lot that you can do to meet the standards for English language arts. And you have to, um, one of the really core foundational. Um. Strategies of good teaching is to identify what are the key things amongst all of these standards? What are the key things that we know our students need to know? And all of those things that are the core things that our students need to know, how do I know that they know them? What happens when I, when, and then? When they know that as a first grader? Now, second grade, they come back and they say, oh, was the state student able to do that here as a first grader? Yep, they were. I can continue to build forward. It's kind of like breaking down. All of the different expectations and all of the things and really being intentional with our focus on. These are the core values. These are the things that we believe our students in Painesville area schools will demonstrate. And should be able to demonstrate as they progress through their school career from a kindergartner through a senior. Do, does that mean that they don't get to graduate if they don't show good character? No, that's not what that means. Does that mean that we value char- and I'm using just, again, character as an example. Maybe it's resilience, maybe it's, maybe it's perseverance, they don't give up. I don't know, what is it? But what are the things that we look at our students being successful? Using more than just their technical skills. And what are the things that we believe are important and how does that look? As we teach kindergartners, as we teach sixth graders, as we teach ninth graders and we teach seniors. It's all the common, and it's gonna look different from a kindergartner to a ninth grader.
But we're taking a a first and second grade teacher, right? I believe that our first grade teachers are gonna have a pretty good understanding of what they need to know for second grade. Whether this is there or not, I believe the second grade teachers are gonna have a pretty good idea of where the students should be at for the next grade. Uh, that's what I believe. And I believe our instructors are doing the best they can. Um, to try and accommodate that.
So do you find, do you find value, though, in giving them time, effort and energy to say? Here are, if if nobody ever says to them, did you identify your areas that you should focus on and you should know? Do we just expect them that I I as this teacher, my, I'm I'm gonna think this is important, you might think that's important. Gerald's gonna say think something else is important. They're all part of the standards and they're all important. But if we don't ever intentionally come back and say.
Yeah.
This is what the three of us.
No, I don't, I don't wanna hold this up. First thing I can say is New London Spicer, a town of two thousand kids, or a a school of two thousand kids. Ah, for them, three times thirty thousand might not be as big a deal. Little Falls is the same, Alexandria is the same. Watertown Mayor, I don't know, I didn't get a chance to look up their school population. I suspect that's about the same. I don't know anything about Byron.
Byron's little, Byron's smaller than the ark.
So I'm looking here and I'm saying, okay, we're in a budget issue.
And and.
I'm just not there for the the ten grand.
And Bruce, here's what I, so when we were talking last spring, and one of the things I heard the board talk about is look at what's in the strategic plan. And focus on what's in the strategic plan. So you will see that we have not made any proposal to reduce anything that has to do with. Social emotional learning or multi-tiered systems of support. Those are all part of the strategic plan.
So last year we had the strategic plan, um, we also sent out a survey. Somewhere in the mix of all that and found out the public wasn't gonna buy seven hundred and fifty dollar referendum, so we ended up at four hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
And we are now here.
Yeah.
Yes, I understand that was there. Not that I'm totally opposed to this thing specifically, I just don't know if timing is correct. For us to be investing in this right now, time and resources, should we be better spending our time and resources? Um, at. Doing our jobs the way they are at the moment until it looks like that funding is there.
And and.
Like you said, strategic plans have to ebb and flow, right?
What I'm also gonna.
Flow is if we don't do this right now.
My, what I'm also gonna suggest to you is then we run the risk that we have to do it on our own. Because the partnerships aren't available. Again, so then we we triple the cost, which is okay if that's what we wanna do. I a-again, if this is not the direction that, so the the direction that I was taking is based on the strategic plan. If I'm hearing that the board is not, then I think we need to bring that strategic plan back to the table. And have conversation about it, because that was where I've been taking my direction is from the strategic plan. It's been.
I think we should bring it back.
To me, the issue is multi-tiered. If we don't like the program, why are we even talking about the rest of it? If that's what the board feels, I don't know what what you're feeling, I'm just, if it's all about money, that's another issue. If it's about the time, that's another issue. If it's about this program, well, we don't like it, we don't wanna do it, then that settles it. To me, if we like it, then we need to start talking about, well, how would, how might we accomplish?
And and I think that's, I think it was time I thought of it. I like the. The the concept, the holistic view of what this program can do. I like what it can bring for information to our district. So we have opportunity to to expand that information to our public. I mean, we're getting public information from our public. Essentially to to develop what we wanna look like as districts so that we can broadcast that back out to our public and and in ten fold, but. I guess I am still, I've had the seven to nine or eight, ten, whatever the the nine thousand dollars we'll call it for, it's just, again. We're just asked for a two hundred thousand dollar budget deficit, but we're gonna come back and and spend, you know, say that.
And so I'm gonna parallel this back to the indoor air quality project, okay? It was bad timing. We had our indoor air quality project came in over budget immediately after. The referendum failed. Then we get to choose the timing. And and I understand, I do understand that there are pluses and minuses. We're also talking about adding a teacher. And there's not a, again. That's, we're talking about adds and subtracts in a whole system of the budget. So again, I mean. I I hear what I hear.
The the, I think the slight difference is the add subtracts of the indoor air quality was a project that was kinda earmarked that we need, knew we need to get done. So that building needed some major upgrades and and as we know too, can you do need major upgrades? Uh, teachers' add and subtracts are are pieces of education that we that we're requiring, that we need. The difference in this add and subtract is, is our school gonna falter five years from now if we don't do this? You know, that's the difference there, you know, this is not a facility or educational requirement of our district. But I think, again, the holistic view of what it brings is valuable. So I mean, if we've got a donor over here of nine thousand dollars that says, you know. Well, you know, really believe in this work and think this is valuable for our district, you know, let's jump on and move. Um, it's, I think that's. That's my give and take a little bit.
I get them. My question too is the value of. We're coming up with a description of a a graduate and most of the description is intangible. Are we already teaching that? There's no way to test it. There's no way to show us that we are already doing it. Or that how we can teach it or implement programs that will upgrade the graduate to whatever we're.
And I think we're, it's again, and and yeah, it's a holistic aspect of of an, I I think I caught what you said earlier, Janelle of of. Being being direct to our staff to to say, these are the value, like as a whole, this is the values that we wanna continue to. To incorporate in education instead of having multiple different values, which everybody feels differently, you know, and having that same direction. So everybody's moving in that same direction forward within the values of education that we're providing, but.
Okay, Gerald, Gerald would like.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know, I, uh, Cheryl, Cheryl mentioned kind of said a little bit what I wanted to say. In, because I look at at this, you know, if we're looking at something, we're trying to put together of of core values. I think our teachers already teach that. So so in a sense, to me, it's kind of a slap in the face of saying, hey, we're gonna go back and say, you know, you you, maybe you're not teaching properly. And again, that's my opinion. But the other thing with with that, if we already have a mission statement of this is what we are going to teach. And and that, to me, then we don't need this because we have that mission statement and that's where we should be pushing forward. I agree, we need to go back and take a look at the strategic plan. As you know, I'm new to this. If you guys set this up with some other time, do we have three new members? I would rather see the the strategic plan, just go back and take a look at that.
Well, I think, because I've heard you say this so many times, Bruce, that the strategic plans get thrown up on a shelf and never looked at again. I think. Janelle is not throwing it on a shelf, she's looking at it and trying to move it forward. So if we need to look at it again, then we all need to look at it again. But we need to keep it in the forefront or it will stay on the shelf. Or we need to, it needs to be doing something. Why do you have a strategic plan if it doesn't do anything? So what's it doing?
My question is, does the strategic plan drive the work that we do?
Right. It should.
I think it does. I think since it's been developed, that's been before Cheryl got here, you know, Matt was utilizing and then you. You picked up with where the utilization was with, that means tweaks and improvements to what you display to us through the strategic plan. It's something that, you know, brought back to us, you know, monthly basis, it is a working document.
And the way Janelle put it together so that we could see it physically moving from one area to another, that was, that was wonderful. I love that. Was very easy to follow and we could actually see that things were moving.
Mm-hmm.
I love that. But the strategic plan, in my mind, pretty much covers this. As far as getting the community together, I think this is a great thing, but is it a time to spend the money on it?
Well, we had strategic plans, I could probably dig it up. I kept almost everything. Where we had this strategic plan about something we were gonna do. And all of a sudden, amazing thing, like the budget came into effect and we shifted gears on the strategic plan. That's why it's a moving document.
Right.
Take a look at, I think, makes sense to me. And maybe we have to. And maybe we have to get everything else under control to move forward. I mean, if everything works where the legislature comes out with a five and a five this year. That's gonna help a lot. Probably wouldn't even say anything. But at the meet, at the conference, when I asked them about it, they said at the School Board Association, they were already reneging on that. Which means that we're already trying to go backwards on that. We don't have any idea. From Janelle's standpoint, she is, she doesn't have any way to know what to do till something is solidified. But it's not the first time. We've had projects that we were, if I recall correctly, that we were looking at and budget came and didn't mean that we stopped. And I'm not saying that maybe we don't stop and look at this a little more. I'd personally be way more comfortable if I saw a bunch of small schools in there, but I'm seeing five here, which I don't think.
To to a, to a point, you know, I would assume the the five schools that you brought in here worked with this group, this program, and I, my assumption is there's other programs similar to this throughout the nation, throughout.
There are extensive.
And and this is a newer, newer philosophy in 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 probably the education world as much as the business world. There there are those change in HR philosophies and and how how you want to how you want your staff to behave or how the what kind of, you know, values do you want your staff to have? Those are brought into private businesses all the time and those things evolve and change every ten, fifteen, twenty years. There's new programs, new philosophies and multiple organizations that drive that type of work forward and 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 so that's why, as far as not seeing a ton of small schools, I mean, there's too many variables to to say that the other districts haven't done similar things. Uh have districts probably done things on their own that are just taking, taking the nuts and bolts of what this program's doing and just say, hey, let's kick this out and do this on our own. It's basically a strategic plan. You know, it's a strategic plan for for education, the students, you know, direction for your staff, uh direction for the the leaders and administrators. That's probably why I don't see it, but and and again, that doesn't make it less valuable, it just is the value in today's dollar appropriate.
Okay, we've been rehashing this, uh Rachel, you don't have to, but do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I don't have, I just make it all like.
Kennedy, do you have anything you'd wanna say? Oh, okay, I want to make sure that those have. I'm hearing a consensus somewhat that we need to look at the strategic plan.
Yeah, I figure if we're in a budget deficit, then Rick, that's where we need to go first. Just take a look at the strategic plan again. I I don't even really understand what it looks like, so.
I can bring that, I will bring the strategic plan to our um April work session and we'll dig into it a little bit more. Um I I I am hesitant to change the direction of a strategic plan. In a knee-jerk reaction. Uh I think the strategic plan was thoughtful when it was put together. I think it was done with many stakeholders. Um and I I just, I I really think that, I again, I I we absolutely can review it together, but I I don't, I don't see, um I would have a hard time looking to revise it in, at this moment in time without having again, pulling all those community stakeholders back together and saying, yeah, I don't think this is of value.
And I think that's the problem. If we think of the strategic plan having to be changed every two years, then it's not a strategic plan.
Right.
And and I'm not necessarily in the notion that at any level, I think that we need to re-look at or re- or change strategic plan or anything else like that, but you know this fits into the strategic plan.
Yeah.
But is it the right time for a nine thousand dollar building?
Sure.
Yep. I I don't see us looking at the strategic plan to revamp it.
No.
I think we have three new members on our board. We need to look at the strategic plans so that they can understand it and look at the process that we've been going through. It's it's a living document, it's moving forward.
Yeah.
Add to it and
Living document.
We can add to it and be tracked from it as we need to. And like I said, Janelle's
I could say change, but
Yes.
It's not something you throw out and start over again.
No, 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 it's working with it, but but we have three new board members who need to understand it there.
Yeah. And I can put that on for the April board meeting. Um I will not commit to this project and I so just, I will let them know that that Painesville is not going to move forward. Um and then we'll have to look at something at another point in time. Is that what I'm hearing is a general consensus?
Well, when are they trying to make up their mind? If they're thinking of making up their mind, I'm gonna do this starting in June. Well, maybe we just say, hey, at this point, we're not moving forward to it, not that we might not be interested.
Um, I can
They're in sales. You just have to be honest with them.
Yep, they are.
Just say, hey, but this could be what is, but we're gonna, we have some process that we're gonna do with the board and um we'll move after that if.
Yep, I, um, so their their timeframe was to um have our first kind of, they would like to know by May. Um if we're on board or if we're not. Um and that's, and I think that that's that's fair in order for them to pull together the resources, the teams, the trainings, the opportunities, so.
We'll figure it out there in sales. We need to figure it out from our side.
No, I agree, but I don't think it's, I don't think we, I don't see us asking them to wait beyond May for us, is what I'm suggesting.
Yeah. I think all the decisions
We should get, we'll make a decision by then.
All right.
Any other discussion on that? Or are we ready to move on? Okay, information roundtable. Does anyone, the board have any questions or any want to bring up with this?
Um I had a question from a community member. If parents wish to um review some curriculum, specific curriculum, is that possible to be done?
Um connect with the building principals.
And it can be done.
Yep.
That was the question. That's all I gave you. Thank you.
Yep.
So I need to say something about a feel-good thing just on the side. When I come back here on Saturday mornings and that parking lot is absolutely plugged up and this one is all plugged up. I believe that we did what the community was talking about. We are filling up this community, these people are going there. So are they eating lunch? Someone probably eaten in there, but I'm sure that we have restaurant facilities, all that. So as far as being a part of community, every time I see that parking lot full and it doesn't have to be totally filled full, I just feel good about it because we have the community together and what was done there, I believe, still is in the best interest of our community uh and all the parts of it.
Seventh and eighth grade boys' basketball tournament, uh my folks from Royal Timber Gaga bought our facility. Just thought it was great.
Yep.
We've had coaches tell us that they wanna move in here.
So.
Uh I had a question, uh that came from a lady. She wants to know about the library, what happened to the books down there? Does anybody know?
They're in a media center in a different room.
So they're the books that from that came out of that library? Okay, I'll let her know that.
Yep.
Yep.
Does she want some?
I don't.
Anyone else? That I believe were adjourned.
That's right.